I'm always trying to get mine to come up. Let's see what I can get there.
Mr. Ackerman, the podium is yours. Oh, wait a minute, timeout, we forgot something. We need an approval of the agenda. I'll come back in a minute. I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Ackerman, now you can come back up. Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely, good to be here. My goodness, what a great fall it's been. And at the end, I'm going to just show a quick collage of what we've been seeing from our activities over the last several weeks. But I thought I would start just by giving a quick recap of our Veterans Day, our LPS Salute to Veterans Breakfast we had over at Discovery Middle School. Gosh, we had nearly 100, I think, in attendance that morning, and it was great to see many of you there. And we just appreciate everyone that pitched in to make that a good morning, our student participants. Were any of our Liberty North Stuco kids, I know there are several that are going to be here tonight. They were on hand welcoming veterans that morning as they came in. We can't thank them enough, along with everyone at DMS, Dr. Greg Mead's principal, and the entire crew for sharing with us their talents. And it was a great morning, so just wanted to make a quick mention of that before we move into our recognitions tonight. We have a couple of young ladies with us this evening, and then we have a virtual recognition for one of our recently crowned state champions. So what I'm going to do first, if we could introduce you to Ava Beltron. Ava, would you want to join me here at the podium? Ava is something else. Coach and cook, longtime coach at Liberty High School. I'll tell a quick story, I was actually at Clayview two years ago. You didn't know this because you were on the courts below. I was up looking through the glass, and I watched about 30 seconds of Ava move back and forth on the court. And I was like, who is this? And Coach Cook walks through, you remember that evening? And I asked Pam, I said, who is that down there? And she goes, that's Ava Beltron, and she's going to be a Blue Jay. She was in eighth grade, and the rest is history. Ava, the recently named Missouri Class Three Individual State Champion, becoming just the second girls tennis player in LHS history to be named to win an individual state championship. We recognized Colby Kelly here just a few years ago. Thanks to Coach Cook for submitting a few stats for Ava. 31 and 1 singles record, the Pembroke Hill eighth light champ, Kansas City Invite eighth light champ. And those are super, super tough tournaments, and she's only a sophomore. And the future is bright. Ava, a lot of my friends call me a fanboy. You know what a fanboy is? I brought a tennis ball. Here is your official, will you sign it? And then I'm going to present her with a special award. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Ava Beltron. Congratulations. I also had a chance, a few of us had a chance, to visit the Liberty High School cheerleading practice. They practice over at Manor Hill Elementary. They too were named state champions earlier this month, the first weekend of November over in St. Louis. So what we thought we would do, they had several conflicts within the squad, so what we thought we would do is we'd go catch up with Coach Moats, and then have the girls introduce themselves again, state championship number 12 for this squad.
We're very excited. We're competing in those success small division, which is a new division as of last year. And this was our first time winning that division. We've been only in the five large, and we bumped up to six A divisions here. This team is remarkable. They are a true great family, and they are the opinion of what it is for a team. They were working just to do the best that they could do, and it just so happens that best happened on Saturday, and came back to that state title. We are state champion, Liberty High School cheerleading team, all of us on a C and all of us sophomore. I'm Abby Newton, and I'm a senior. I'm Addison Asby, I'm a senior. I'm Laura Kuzina, I'm a sophomore. I'm Addison Roseberry, and I'm a junior. I'm Lysin Monroe, and I'm a junior. I'm Kaito Miami, and I'm a senior. I'm Alan Freeman, I'm a freshman. I'm Kaylin Bowles, and I'm a junior. I'm Riley Ballz, and I'm a junior. I'm Lucy Cruz, and I'm a sophomore. I'm Nafella Ryan, and I'm a sophomore. I'm Zara Laconfe, and I'm a sophomore. I'm Megan Smead, and I'm a junior. I'm Rosie Bryant, and I'm a freshman. I'm Evelyn Donsu, and I'm a junior. I'm Isabel Michael, and I'm a sophomore. I'm Isabel Wimhorst, and I'm a freshman. They're camaraderie, the way that they care about each other, they take care of each other, the way they're going to the community there. They're just really nice with kids, and super talented, and they have been working towards singles since they got on the team. There's 18 on varsity, and only three of them are on youth of the team this year. So the 15 that were on the mat, were on the mat last year as well. So this team is good, and they are out to capture that state title.
Awesome stuff, so let's give a big round of applause for the state champions. Coach Moats and the Jays. And on that same day, amazing individual performances took place. None bigger and better than Liberty North High School's Lily Currents. Lily, join me here with them. Lily, as you can see the photo, holding on to that All-State Award as the top six A tumbler, which that doesn't mean Dallas tumbling downstairs, that means this stuff, right? From like one end of the gym to the other, I'm sure, I've seen them in action. I have to ask, if her father gave her this talent...
Mostly.
No, but a huge congrats to Lily for this achievement. Lily a junior, so still another year, and wanted to thank Coach Kelsey Mayad for being here tonight, her first year as head coach. The team finished fourth overall as well, but I know that everyone was so happy and proud of you for bringing home this great recognition. There is your certificate as well. Let's give Lily a big... I mentioned on the front end just what a fall it has been. I feel like every single year, I stand up here and say, this is probably the biggest fall I've ever seen. There's no doubt this is probably the biggest and best. And I was talking to our two amazing principals, Dr. Sharp and Dr. Camp in the back, and look, kids, they're sitting next to each other. Our Eagle and Blue Jay friends. But when we were talking about just how the accomplishments have just seemed to pinball back and forth between Liberty High and Liberty North, and you see them in front of you, just all sorts of amazing things, both individual and team. And we are so proud of all of them. If you'd like to take a look at all of the specific individual achievements, we encourage you to go over to our Facebook, Twitter, X platforms, and we'll have those. We've been following those the last several weeks. And I thought I would just wrap up Denise with the final graphic, and the fall is not over yet, as the Blue Jays will be over here at Liberty High School on Saturday afternoon for state quarterfinal football at 1 o'clock against Park Hill. And then you see the soccer team, the boys soccer team at Liberty North, they made history. Their first Final Four appearance will be coming up on Friday night as they'll take on Sloop. The Eagles, the only public school making the Final Four, so wish Coach Arthur Smith and his team the best of luck. Again, thanks to everyone for coming out this evening. Ava, thanks for the monograph, this is going to my office.
One of the things that the board does when we have state champions and state winners is we give them a standing ovation. So I would like for us to do that for all of them. And then if you would stick around for five or so minutes, we'd like to come out and congratulate you. I don't think any of us have tennis balls, so Ava, Dallas is the only one who did that. But we'd like to come and congratulate you, your parents, your coaches, whoever else is here, so thank you very much. We'll be back about 7:18.
Big guys, I don't know.
Yeah, the coast, the Liberty North, you might know it, the problem is the coast is out. Either hour or hour, and it's gonna be some big trouble, but you can do it. Yeah, you poke it over, and then either hour or hour, it's not...
All right. One of the things we do after honoring excellence is public comment. I don't have the card, I don't know if anyone else has the card. If not, then we go down to the consent agenda, which is our adopted rules of parliamentary procedures. Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. I just lost my space. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be moved, removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board members. So do I have a motion?
I move the board approve consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.8.
Second. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, on to reports.
Yeah, our first report from administration is our Innovation and Learning Report. And filling in for Dr. Moore is Dr. Michelle Schmitz, making her way to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening. So as you can see, this has been a very busy month for fine arts and athletics. So we are so proud of the successes of these students, and we just want to say that it's also one of the things to thank the teachers for pouring into them daily and making it possible. And it's great to see how they thrive in so many different areas. Next on the report here is the graduate follow-up. It's already started for the class of 2024. This is one of the areas highlighted on our dashboard. The follow-up rate measures the opportunity that students pursue after graduation. The follow-up rate measures the opportunity that students pursue after graduation. So, we look at five identified categories. College enrollment, trade and technical school, employment, military service, and national service such as the P-Score. So, that's already underway for the class of 2024. Also, as a part of MSEP six, the School Climate and Culture Parent Survey is currently being promoted to parents through school newsletters. And then, fall parent teacher conference percentages were shared in the board report. Uh, we are consistently looking for ways to increase the secondary percentage. And so, we've already had many discussions about that and things that we could do differently, including, um, a portfolio of student work to engage parents more to come to the conference. And then, we are excited that we are growing our professional learning modules for teachers. We are currently have five modules. Uh, we are going to add two very shortly, and this is a part of our strategic plan. And the goal is to provide personalized professional learning to teachers. And our goal to, is to have ten online modules in April. So, that's all I have tonight. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of Dr. Schmitz? I told her to be ready.
I have one question on, on the parent teacher conferences. And my sons, when they went through at Liberty High School, I know that it was just a mass of teachers in the cafeteria. There weren't appointments, you just lined up and waited your turn. I, you would think that making appointments would be more effective, but I don't know. I've heard from more than one that maybe that is the better way to go. Just almost from a, uh, people said, I got to see so many people when I was at that and would connect with other parents. Is that something that we considered or would consider for high schools?
I think those are all topics that we are discussing right now to promote increased percentages. So, that's definitely on the table, um, amongst many other things that we're talking about.
And that, that virtual option too, right? That's something new that we haven't done, you know, in years past where it's some people elected to do that from their kitchen table, right? Just a matter of making sure you hit your scheduled zooms, so.
My experience this year was, it was scheduled. So, it's going to end in the teachers' classrooms. And I think, at least for us, with our first freshman coming out of it, I felt like it was very well-run. Um, and I liked the engagement from the teachers, no distractions. And I don't know, right? It wasn't, hadn't been in a, uh, in the fieldhouse or anything like that. But it was very much one-on-one, how's your student doing personally? Then let's talk a little bit about, you know, what's going on academically. So, I, my experience this year was pretty solid.
Also, we have so many ways to follow along. Like, I mean, I can just log into Canvas or Power School and kind, I mean, that's not telling you a story of your child personally, but if you have a concern, you can kind of navigate that where sometimes you can't or you, we haven't had that ability. So, I, I don't really go to conferences because I just look and see if everything's okay. And if it is, I don't go. But if you want people to go, I'm going to plug Parent University again. Maybe we, maybe we can have another thing going on or another reason to be there.
To, to that point, it's interesting. I mean, this is, this is great, and I'm sorry, Dr. Schmitz. It's all like, what is the right measure of engagement? Because I think we've used parent teacher conference percent of parents that are here. Is that a true measure of engagement to your point of that? I don't need it because there's all these different areas where I can connect and be a part. And so, as long as we're getting, you know, parents what they need, where they're at, and what they're comfortable with, then yeah, I think it's probably all good.
Well, I think with activities and other things, I mean, I've probably been at the high school more this year than I would have been at a middle school during an entire year just because of things going on. So, you do have that connection that I think probably ends up translating to those numbers.
I will say, I've appreciated when I did make, I, I didn't make appointments with all of my high schools, high schoolers, teachers. But the ones I did, I felt like they had time to prepare. They knew that they, that I was coming and were able to prepare and know more specifically. And so, I did appreciate that. So, that was, I mean, it was a good experience for me.
That's good feedback.
This isn't counted on any engagement scenario through even success-ready student network. This type of engagement isn't counted?
No, it, it, the closest it would show up would be in those climate and culture surveys. When you might ask a question around, as from a parent perspective, you know, is, does my building engage me? Am I drawn in? Am I included? Am I communicated with? Um, you know, as everyone has been sharing, um, think about when you were in school and what you had then compared to what you have now. You had to dial up, telephone, and you had those activities at school certainly. But then, parent teacher conferences is when you got kind of the broader picture earlier in the fall as to how things are going. You know, as Nick was sharing in terms of indicators of parent engagement. Now, what do we do? We monitor clicks. We monitor clicks through Power School as far as how often parents are logging on, logging in. And we have that data available. But to your point, each of you, there are a lot of different ways to engage. We do value that face-to-face. Um, that creates the relationship. And I think once you get to those face-to-face conversations anecdotally, I think a lot of parents just want to know that their kids are doing well. Um, all the academic data and information is available at your fingertips, but they want to know, how is my child doing as a human being? Um, which we know is an important piece too, so. What other questions for Dr. Schmitz?
Shall we make something up?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schmitz.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Uh, next then, five point two, Student Equity and Access Report. We'll welcome Dr. Andrea Dixon-Seawright.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I have a few things I'd like to share. Uh, the first one is around the idea of our Equity Round Tables. This is the first year we've implemented those. And so, recently, we had about sixteen school leaders and directors across the organization voluntarily participate in our Equity Round Tables. And as mentioned in the report, it's a forum for them as colleagues to learn from one another. You know, as a professional learning community, we call those PLCs, uh, to share their problems of practice, generate solutions, and highlight their progress that they're making towards actualizing either their belonging goals, which are embedded into their school improvement plans, or their SMARTY goals for those that are leading departments as part of their department Equity Action Plan. So, we have three of these convenings scheduled for this year. And, uh, we're excited about as we get to the end of this work, what those outcomes and results are. So, we'll keep you updated. Also, in the vein of family engagement, uh, so just as Dr. Schmitz mentioned, the learning modules that have been developed for educators. We also have, at this time, the same modules that have been developed for families. We've made some minor tweaks to those, uh, to make them more family-friendly. Uh, but the purpose is that we do have, um, another strategic plan. That's Strategic Plan thirteen, which is focused on family engagement. And so, those learning modules have been developed by LPS educators for parents and guardians. And the goal is to build awareness of educational opportunities and learning experiences that support the individualized needs and/or personal interests of students. So, these modules were launched last week as part of Quick News. Thank you, Dallas. They can be accessed on our district's website homepage under the Family tab. If you're interested in just kind of going to that library and accessing that content. And already, and, and the, um, just kind of, again, we were just mentioning clicks and so on and so forth, but already, we've had about two hundred and eighty-one page views on the different content that's available. So, topics include the LPS graduate profile, competency-based education, AI in education, real-world learning. This is more secondary focus, as well as ADDID, which is Advancement Via Individual Determination. And again, that's secondary level content as well. We'll be adding more, uh, topics, uh, throughout the year. And we also have added a feedback form. So, that's a feature that's embedded into the website so that parents and families can share comments, they can ask questions, and even provide some suggestions for future topics. So, we'll keep you updated on that as well. And the last thing I wanted to highlight is that, uh, within the Special Programs Department, LPS did receive the final audit report for Clay County Children's Services Fund. This is for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh, the auditor looked at the programs and interventions that were funded by the grant, including, um, several, uh, outcomes to be measured. And in pulling from random samples that were audited, we received a score of one hundred percent in all of the categories that were being measured. And specifically, the auditor commented Liberty Public Schools provided clear and accurate documentation of programs in the grant. Outcomes data presented an overall positive growth for both students and teachers. And no recommendations were provided. So, that's pretty good. And then, lastly, uh, the annual report for special programs is included in this month's board report for your review. So, that's all I wanted to highlight this evening, and I'll gladly take any questions that you may have.
I, I did read that. I, I talked to you about that hundred percent. I was impressed also. Uh, talking about family engagement, uh, English language classes for the family as well as immigrant students, I think that's a powerful statement about really fitting a niche and meeting people's needs, uh, and should create a lot of belonging. So, I'm, I'm impressed with that.
Absolutely. So, as the students themselves are learning the English language, it's an opportunity for their parents, their guardians, to learn the language as well.
Great idea.
I also just want to again reiterate how much I, I love that the Special Services Department is doing the parent engagement meetings on month. But, well, it's not monthly, but it's like every couple of months, right?
Pretty monthly, yes.
And that they're, that they stream them too. Because the one that I've been to, you know, they were people attending online. There were people there in person. And then, it's posted afterwards to the website so that people can go back and watch later. And so, meeting people where they are, so. I think that's fantastic.
I think it's become our theme.
Yes, yes.
Family engagement.
And the registration event, I think, is phenomenal. Not just for our purposes, but also the services that are provided to those families at that event, getting them registered and.
Yes, with our social workers and then also, yes. Thank you.
Well, and to that, to that point, the Special Programs Report, I mean, it's just, it's such a nice reminder of all the different areas. That we are providing support to folks, um, meeting students and learners where they're at and, and providing them, um, you know, social work support, title support, all of those things. And so, that was, it's always a nice reminder to go through that report and just see all the good work we're doing.
Kudos to Dr. Meisenheimer and her team.
On the Equity Round Tables, are those sixteen individuals static? Or will they change over the year?
They will mainly be the people that participate. I did, uh, open up the opportunity just recently, a DLT, for anyone else that wants to join us. So, if anyone's interested, they can join. Um, but as of now, those are the people that signed up. And so, they are actively engaged in that process. Very excited.
I like the idea. I think it sounds like a great way to exchange ideas.
Yes.
Among your peers and get information and not have to recreate the wheel.
I would agree with you there. Thank you.
And then, the, um, Special Programs. Yes, to the very front page, again, I love that page. It's my favorite page of all the reports.
The part where she said it reminded her of the heart resilience and dedication that defines our community?
All of that.
I love that.
All of it. She loves the letters.
I just, I, I do because it gives you part of the personality of the person who's writing it. And then, adds little anecdotes that may not surface in the rest of the report. And those anecdotes help me to remember.
Absolutely.
So, please pass that along.
I will do that. She's probably tuning in, so she's going to hear it, and then I will tell her as well. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Dixon-Seawright.
Thank you so much.
Uh, next then, five point three is our Finance Report. Ms. Cindy Sullivan.
Good evening. I have two donations to present to you this evening. The first is a monetary donation of five hundred dollars from Union State Bank of Shoal Creek to the Liberty High School Women's Empowerment Club to be used for outreach events and member retention. The second is an anonymous donation of a Nilling three-quarter string bass. Hope I got that right. Valued at twenty-five hundred dollars to the Fine Arts Department to be used in orchestra inventory for students that need to rent instruments from the district. That's a first. Thank them both for those generous donations that they've made on, to support our students. Couple other things to share with you this evening. We did complete underwriter interviews on, uh, November seventh. We have made a tentative selection and are now working through the details. And we'll have that presented to you at the December meeting for your approval of that. I also mentioned at our study session this month that we would be meeting with the county assessor regarding, um, assessed valuation protest by Le Cleed Energy. And we did meet with them, and I have a few more details on that. This is a ten-year process. Le Cleed has, has appealed their taxes for the last ten years. And, um, we're getting toward the end of all of that process. So, the State Tax Commission did rule in August, and they ruled more in favor of Le Cleed, but Le Cleed did appeal it anyway because it wasn't as much in favor of them as they wanted. So, they appealed it, the county appealed it, and now, uh, the county has gathered us all together and has asked us to write an impact letter of what the loss of those funds will mean to the district. So, we have been working with Tom to draft that letter, and all of the other, um, Clay County school districts are doing the same with the help of their attorneys. And so, we will have that finalized this week to send to the State Tax Commission, hopefully to support our case, um, on that money that is due to us and that is currently held in escrow. So, that's not, it's not over by any stretch, but we are doing everything in our power to hopefully get a favorable outcome in that. And we did, um, we're informed that Le Cleed has about five point six million dollars of district money in escrow that is due to us from their protest of property taxes. So, that's a good chunk of money.
And that's five point six after the state gave them a beneficial ruling earlier this year?
No, if, if, that's the whole amount that is due to us. If they go with what was ruled on in August, we would get a little over half of that currently.
Got it.
My guess is they don't want to pay even half, so.
That would be apparent, yes.
So, on the heels of that, in, um, our October county pay, or our November county payment, we did receive back taxes of about one point five million dollars. And that is also a result of the State Tax Commission acting on protested assessed valuation cases. Um, the State Tax Commission is appointed, to give you just a little bit of history there. And those appointments have all pretty much changed in the, in the most current session of the State Tax Commission life. And so, I think there's a huge backlog in the State Tax Commission, but it's apparent that they are ruling on some, um, cases that are there. So, Clay County Assessor's Office had fifty-five outstanding State Tax, um, Commission appeals for twenty-twenty-three. Of those fifty-five, ten of them were settled, twenty-seven have been dismissed. And so, that resulted in the payout to the district of about one point five million dollars in taxes that were escrowed due to assessed valuation protests. So, um, they anticipate that those will happen probably every reassessment year. And they've won them, so they feel good. The county feels good that the outcome will be favorable to us in the future. It just delays our receipt of the money.
Do you have a view to how much is protested, or is it?
Not, I, I have received in one year, during one year, a, a, a letter from the, um, Assessor's Office.
Yeah.
What was being assessed and protested.
Got it.
So, what I'm wanting to do now is every year to get that list of what, what's in escrow that we don't have access to. So, um, that gives me a better insight to also projecting my revenue.
Sure.
So, if I know this, this is the most information I've gotten for a long time, and it's very helpful to know that I can anticipate a backlog of this revenue every two years.
Yeah, that's great.
And, and we've been in good enough of a financial position. I mean, one of the things you can do is file a friendly suit to get that money out of escrow and say, we're going to accrue interest on it. Understand we might have to pay it back, but we haven't had to do that.
Right.
That's always an option too.
Yep.
Yeah.
But it would help if you knew what it was.
Exactly.
Right?
And I don't, I should know better than, but I don't know if they're required to send that to us and just haven't, or if that's just a, a friendly agreement. But we talked enough lately that they know the importance of that to us. So, hopefully, more information like that will be forthcoming. And they've been very generous on giving me information lately as far, for anything I've asked for. Pretty quickly, so. I appreciate that.
So, if Le Cleed has appealed, so will they continue to put money into the escrow as they await the outcome of the appeal process?
Right.
So, that amount of escrow could continue to grow?
They appealed their twenty-four tax bill before they had their twenty-four tax bill. So, they continually, they pay it.
Lawyers.
So they continually, they pay it, and it's just set aside.
You have to make the payment. It can be received by the district, as Drew has mentioned. But then, of course, if they're successful in their appeal, you have to pay it back.
And I mean, the genesis of the appeal we're talking about now is the 14, 15 tax years, though, right? So I mean, this is...
Goes back a ways.
Is, you know, the wheels of justice moving quickly.
But you, so you could, you could take the payment and us hold it somehow in a separate account, gain the interest off of it, maybe have to pay back the principal on that, but the interest would be ours?
That's a great question, and I don't know that.
Okay, that's interesting.
I don't have that answer. So, but there is a process you have to go through to get that money out of escrow.
But then conversely, is that what they are doing?
The county's holding the money.
Are they earning it?
And in an account, but not in investments or other, right?
It's in an account, saved.
But if it's escrow, it could be earning interest, huh?
Well, we should get a percentage of that, too.
All good questions. I wouldn't think they, I wouldn't think they would invest it just because they stand to lose the money that's due to us.
Interesting machinations of my finance.
But I mean, if you can earn on it for 10 years before anyone...
Right. Gets it back. I think that's a few dollars.
And so in case, and I may have missed this. So if this happened in 14, 15, has it been happening since?
So the $5.6 million is the culmination of taxes every year for the past 10 years, and soon to be 11 as soon as they pay their tax bill.
That's a lot of money.
I mean, it's hundreds of parcels.
And Le Cleed goes through this because they're just wearing people down. And it's happened in other areas of the state, and finally the Assessor's Office just gives up and lets it happen. And we've been fortunate enough that Kathy Reinhardt and now Tracy Baldwin have taken that up with the State Tax Commission and fought it on our behalf and their behalf.
So they're not getting worn down?
Not yet.
They may be worn down, but they're staying the good vibe.
Thank you.
And the next step would be it would go to the state appellate, or would it state?
Yeah, so I think it would go back to the Western District, I think, and then up to the...
They weren't sure if it would have to go back to the Western District on that. We're running out of things that they can do to appeal it, so we're close to finding it. Anyway, it was very fascinating. I've learned a lot. It's been an interesting process. It's just sad that there's a lot of money sitting out there that could be worn kids. Anyway, that's on that. And then the last thing I have for you is that the Audit Finance Committee did review the financial statements and did not have anything to pass on to you this month. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you.
Other questions for Cindy? Thanks, Ms. Sullivan.
I think we peppered her with it.
Next, then, our 5.4 is our operations report, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. Wanted to highlight two of the departments in operations tonight. First, facilities, maintenance of ground. Steve Aldrich is the director and his team. One item, a couple items are included in the report. One is we received a $14,000 rebate from Evergy, kind of by working through some of the summer demand and participating in some of their programs. Also wanted to mention, they have, you know, there's just a lot going on in that department, as I think, oh, you can appreciate, but the work order tick list, there's over 800 work orders in a month. So amidst everything we're doing with construction and so on. And then to add that, they're kind of getting ready to prep for the snow season. So there's, everybody's always a little jazz to kind of get into, getting the equipment up and running. So just a lot going on there. Just wanted to kind of just acknowledge that crew. The other thing I wanted to do, and I've not done this before, but I'm going to go ahead and read this. This is actually a report, a 38-page report that's included. It's just a great story. So we have a nurse, Vicki Stevens, who's been at Manor Hill for 19 years. So she's been there a long time, and I'm just going to read this. So it's just a great, great story. So this is in her words. She goes, "This morning, my phone rang with a call from a mother whose voice I recognized but could not immediately place. She told me I might not remember her and her daughter, but they wanted to come see me. I agreed. Before hanging up, she simply said, 'You'll be happy.'" When they arrived, memories rushed back. Her daughter, now an adult, had first come to Manor Hill as a young student with a hearing impairment. And if you'll notice in the report, a lot of testings and screenings that go on, so this was kind of timely. So this young student with a hearing impairment discovered during a routine school screening while attending Manor Hill. Thanks to early intervention, she received her first hearing aid in second grade, a small device that changed her life in ways none of us could have imagined at the time. She still wears that hearing aid to this day. But today, it isn't just about her helping her hear. It's a symbol of her journey, her resilience, and the doors that opened because of that early support. Now she's graduated not only from Liberty Public Schools, but also from nursing school soon. She'll begin her career as a neurology nurse, embarking on a path where she'll touch countless lives and bring so many, hope to so many others. As we shared this moment, her mother noticed a sign on her wall that says, "What you do matters," which is Dr. Tucker's quote for the year. And she looked at me, and her eyes were full of warmth and pride and said, "See, what you do does matter." In that moment, I felt the profound impact of our work, what we do each day, small acts of care and intervention can grow into something life-changing. Moments like these remind me that our efforts truly do matter." So I just thought that was a good, you know, case to honor.
Absolutely.
Miss that, but, and again, appreciate her commitment to the district and a very distinguished career. So that's all I had, and we'd have to take any questions.
Steve, I read that story, and it took me back. I was once a social worker a few years ago, and I had a young man who didn't get screened properly. And so he ended up in an institution as an eighth grader, way behind in school. And we weren't successful with him either. And he went on to be involved in some very serious crimes. And I thought just what a difference it would have made if he'd have been caught at the second grade. So it meant a lot to me to read this story.
Well, this one was wonderful, but, and then the Ridgeview nurse that organized a bike repair day. What a brilliant idea.
Yeah, I had to make a choice here tonight.
That's just, I mean, wellness, a convenience for parents. I mean, I just think about what a great, what a great nursing team we have.
Yeah. Well, and all of the things that the nurses do that you just, you don't really put it all on that one thing, but you've got dental screens, you've got vision screenings, you've got all kinds of screenings that go on that when they do turn up something that maybe escaped a parent or caregiver, the options that then open up for that child are just incredible. And schools have taken on so many of those pieces that, you know, for our nursing staff, it's amazing all the things that they do.
And we'll have a year to celebrate Kathy, Ellen Meyer, who I think you'll, everybody will. She's announced her retirement this year, but she, she and I were talking earlier today. So she started 20 years ago as well. And so this program is kind of her handiwork, you know, in so many ways with her team. And the commitment to the screenings and testing is really a testament to her commitment to the district and our students. And of course, her and Vicki kind of grew up together here. So yeah, it's a great, great little testimony of what they do.
We may put Steve in charge of next month's Honoring Excellence. Bring Clay next. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next, then, our Human Resources Report, 5.5, Dr. Sarah Marriott.
Good evening. A little hard to follow that. Heartwarming stories, Mr. Anderson. Okay, Team Liberty, they conducted a virtual meeting on Wednesday, November 13th, because they needed to review staff survey feedback regarding the proposed 25-26 academic calendar options. We had 620 LPS team members that participated in that survey, which was an increase from prior years. The majority of the staff, about 49.5% selected Calendar Option 1, which is the preferred calendar. And that includes Wednesday, August 28th, as a first day of school for the 25-26 school year. Monday, January 5th, as a teacher workday, followed by Tuesday, January 6th, as student return date. And then Friday, March 27th, or Sunday of April 5th, is the scheduled spring break, which aligns with Lake Northland CAPS programs, because that's critical for us to make sure. So that proposal is in front of you all this evening for a first read. And we thank Team Liberty for their work. They put in a lot of work on this year's calendar. And then also a thank you to all of the team members who participated in that survey and provided feedback. And then in regards to enrollment, that, for open enrollment for benefits, that began on the 23rd of October, and it closed on the 5th of November. Our HR team had a total of 25 benefits information sessions that they shared with LPS team members to make sure that they were educated before they signed up for their preferred health plan. And so we thank our benefits team for all of their hard work in making sure that that information was shared for, with our LPS team members. The district is also offering the same early notification incentive as we've done in years prior for employees who hope to retire at the end of the 24-25 school year. So on the 21st of October, we sent that information to our LPS team members. The deadline to apply is January 14th of '25. And right now, we have had seven employees who have applied for that early notification incentive, six certified and one classified. So we will continue to review that information as it comes available to us. And then the last item that I wanted to share is that our Human Resources team collaborated with the Student Equity and Access Team, and we hosted our first higher education fair for LPS support team staff members. We had seven universities present, and they shared information about their bachelor's and education programs with staff members that were interested in potentially pursuing a teaching degree. So they highlighted many opportunities for scholarships, credit for work experience, and then the online asynchronous learning options now are, that are now available to working adults. We had about 20 people participate in that, so we're talking about ways that we can improve that and offer that again in the spring. I will take any questions that you have.
Any questions of Dr. Marriott?
If we run out.
I know. Run.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item, then, under Admin Reports, a couple of updates under my report this evening to the board. First of all, I wanted to echo what Dr. Schmidt shared and others have shared this evening about the fall, and that it's been incredibly busy. We are in this transition to winter as far as winter activities, but that also comes with a lot of fine arts performance. As far as the middle-level productions, certainly at the high school, the two musicals. Earlier last week, Liberty High School cast put on a phenomenal musical. If you had a chance to go see that, Anything Goes. And I believe pretty much sold-out crowds each night. And then, of course, this week at Liberty North High School, Anastasia. Interestingly, you will recognize a lot of kids that are on the stage because they're involved in a lot of other activities, as far as fall activities and speech and debate and other things over the course of the school year. So it's an incredibly busy time, but then we will transition into all things winter activities coming up, along with winter concerts and performances. So there's plenty to fill your calendar. If you're looking for a date night, we have tickets for a variety of things, too. So feel free to reach out to our Fine Arts Department in relation to accessing those tickets to those events. Now that we are on this side of the election, a couple of things that we're working on as far as connecting with those who will be sworn in later in the spring as far as our new legislators. We will welcome back a few incumbents that were re-elected, along with a couple of new faces. As we are all aware, each time this year, this time of year, we end up with pre-filing. So that's just around the corner on December 1st, and we'll be looking at those pre-filled bills that have an impact on public education. Something you may or may not know, with the help of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, legislatively, districts receive a variety of fiscal notes that then ask districts to provide input on legislation and how they might financially impact the district. And we literally get hundreds, and that is no lie. We get hundreds upon hundreds of those every single session. While we skim through those, we read those, we don't respond to every single one, but we do respond to those that we think will have a significant impact as it relates to our district. So we will begin that process as we turn the calendar year. And in January, start receiving those based on what's been pre-filled. But just wanted to share that, and that's a little inside baseball as it relates to the legislative process here in Missouri and how districts might be impacted by pending legislation. We're also seeing quite a bit of activity as it relates to education associations and legislative priorities. We've talked about that in the past, be it Missouri School Boards Association, cooperating school districts of greater Kansas City, the Missouri Association of School Administrators, most recently at their October meeting. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education approved their legislative priorities that then is available on their website, and they'll be sharing with legislators in the coming session. Wanted to make mention of the Success Ready Students Network. That work continues. As you will recall, earlier this fall, the release and posting of our dashboards that then sit on our district's website. The next piece is the Continuous Improvement Framework. We spoke a little bit about that at our study session last, earlier this month, in which we will take our strategic plan, do a bit of a self-reflection on how we're doing in relation to that Continuous Improvement Framework that Success Ready Students Network has put together. Then that will also inform perhaps some areas we haven't quite yet thought about that might find its way into our strategic plan or building improvement plans. We're also in a series of professional learning facilitated by the network for both that first round of districts that received the first innovation waiver, as well as now the second set of districts that have received the innovation waiver, which is a great opportunity to learn from expertise in the field, but then also learn from districts across Missouri on their journey toward personalized learning, competency-based learning, and incorporating real-world learning. On the real-world learning side, in collaboration with districts around the Kansas City area and the Ewing Marion Kaufman Foundation, we are in the process of refreshing the Real World Learning Strategic Plan. And so while it was started by the Ewing Marion Kaufman Foundation in collaboration with districts, we're beginning those conversations of, you know, what's next? What does a 2.0 version or a 3.0 version now look like? Whether it continues that partnership with Kaufman, certainly supported by the collaboration among districts, or perhaps evolves into a standalone entity. And the work that we do both regionally in the Kansas City area, but across the state of Missouri, but then the reach that it's also having across the entire country is more cities, municipalities, and districts are reaching out to learn from the Kansas City area what's being done with real-world learning. That then is a segue into an upcoming release from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and that is our Annual Performance Report. You all are familiar with that, and that that comes out each year. That provides information regarding the state, but then also local districts' achievement data from prior year standardized assessments, be it the MAP at the elementary and middle level, or end-of-course exams at the high school level, along with other measures, as was mentioned, graduate follow-up, the ICAP, graduation rate, attendance, college and career readiness assessments. There are a variety of things under the Annual Performance Report. As we've entered into the innovation waiver with the Success Ready Students Network and designing an alternative APR, you're seeing the dashboard as the fruit of that work. Statutorily, districts that are part of the network still have to have an APR score. And so we will receive an APR score, but really want to place our emphasis on the alternative APR, which is our district dashboard, or historically, as we've called it in Liberty, our uncommon measures or our scorecard, in that we've been looking at measurement beyond just that standardized test because we know there's a much more holistic view of how our kids are doing academically, from the well-being standpoint, but then also as it relates to real-world learning experiences across our districts. That data is embargoed, but will be released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on November 25th. And so we have a communications plan of information that will come out as well that provides a comprehensive message, both from an APR standpoint, but then also from our dashboard standpoint, and really direct people to our website if they want to learn more. So with that, would certainly open it up for any questions that you all have of me this evening.
I was just playing around on the Success Ready dashboard on our own website, and I think it's great for parents to check that out and just see all of the different things that are being added, searching how our iReady tests are showing that growth over the year, over year. I just think all of that is already available. And seeing the other districts that you've talked about also participating in this project launch that, too. It's going to be interesting to see how the whole state moves as a result of the work that's being done in this network.
And I think on the dashboard, you'll see some refinement going on as far as how they evolve and what districts incorporate, be it a video or more narrative or attachment to documents. So you see quite a bit there, but stay tuned, because I think it will likely evolve. So thank you for that.
How much media attention you think this is going to give?
You know, it's fascinating. It just varies. You know, it's fascinating, it just varies. It varies from region to region.
Year to year.
And year to year, too. Um, I think historically, um, St. Louis area pays quite a bit of attention to it, whereas, you know, they call it outstate Missouri. Uh, rural Missouri doesn't as much. You'll get a little attention on the Kansas City side in our area. Um, you know, people always want to know what their neighbors are up to and how they are doing in comparison. Um, I think the emphasis is that is a single indicator. It is one piece of the fuller picture, the more broad picture. Nationally, there is a lot of discussion and momentum about doing things differently. Uh, most recently, I shared in a Friday update, the work that the Carnegie Foundation is doing in terms of high school transformation, in a limited number of districts and high schools that they're inviting to apply for the High School Transformation Network. Uh, we were one of the recipients that were contacted to apply, in part because of the work we're doing around real-world learning and trying to look at accountability, accountability and assessment differently. So if you keep your ear to the ground nationally, whether it's think tanks or other education groups, other state departments of education, I think everyone is of the realization that we cannot continue to do things as we've always done, and using standardized assessment as that single indicator. So we'll see how big of a splash they make on the media side.
So with the anticipation that there'll be some type of media, should, do we have a response to that? Or, hey, if you're going to publish this APR stuff?
Yeah.
We want you to also have this.
That's right. We do.
So, so we've got that ready?
We'll go out on this point.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And that will be our means locally. So there will be two sets of headlines, headlines coming out of Jefferson City.
Yeah.
Um, which quite frankly are narrow, and I've shared that with Desi, uh, that their headline looks different than our headline. And so their messaging will be this narrow messaging around the Annual Performance Report. I think they'll make mention of those innovation waiver districts, so we anticipate that. More local communication will be that broader message, that you have all these additional pieces, um, that are a part of what we believe matters. So thank you for asking, and I appreciate Dallas's help, and along with Innovation and Learning for working on that.
Okay. I mean, even if they don't ask, we've got, we've got it.
It will be out, it will be out. That's right. We're going to send it to at least our community, and anyone else that wants a copy of it, so.
Yeah, appreciate the perspective.
All right. Thank you all.
Onto unfinished business.
You will recall, uh, with Dr. Morris' help, we provided information over the course of the last couple of meetings, really, about a couple of course proposals. And so just wanted to reiterate what those are. One is an ACT prep course, um, to assist those students interested in, uh, further study around ACT preparation. Another is Advanced Placement Computer Science Principles. And so we've talked a little bit about that previously. I don't know, Dr. Schmitz, if there's anything else you would like to add on that?
Uh, just a reminder, the ACT prep courses will be offered at both high schools.
Yeah.
With no additional staff. So we'll get that.
Yeah. We'll just present those two course recommendations for you this evening for your consideration.
I move the board approve the ACT Prep and AP Computer Science Principles Course Proposals.
Second. Wow. That was fascinating. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. New business.
Uh, Dr. Marriott mentioned this a little bit earlier, um, which I appreciate, the detail in regard to the survey and some of the calendar highlights. So want to express appreciation to both her and Cindy Sullivan, uh, Team Liberty, uh, especially Bob Citro. Bob Citro is our calendar guru, and when we ask for three scenarios or seven scenarios, he's going to produce those pretty quickly, um, and can kind of speak to it forward and backward. Uh, but again, just to repeat some of what Dr. Marriott said, where we've landed on the recommendation that's presented to you this evening for first read, August 20th, that first day of school, fast forward, the end of the semester on December 19th. That then gets us into winter vacation that will happen over the course of December 22nd to January 2nd. Teacher workday on that Monday, as, uh, staff return on January 5th, with students starting the following day. Fast forward to spring break, which as you know, calendars have a multi-year cycle, so we're at that stage where spring break falls the deepest it will fall in March, and then it'll move a little bit earlier in subsequent years. Um, but that window being, spring break beginning on the 30th of March and going through April 3rd. Last day of school being an early release day on May 22nd. That's the first document you have. The second document you have is the EPIC calendar, which, uh, mirrors a lot of our district calendar, but wanted to hit on a couple of high points. August 6th is EPIC's first day of school. Same end of the semester and winter break, teacher workday in January. Spring break mirrors the district's calendar, with the tentative last day of school being on June 6th as far as that early release day. So wanted to share that with you for your information. As you'll recall, last legislative session around seven, Senate Bill 727, um, there were some provisions in and around districts having a school calendar of 169 days or more. And one of the incentives or carrots out there to, um, encourage that is the additional 1% funding, um, in year one, and then in year two, 2% funding from that point forward. And there are several districts that fall below that 169, uh, calendared provision, um, many of which are four-day, uh, school districts, and so there's some, um, political jockeying going around regarding the four-day week. I'll leave it at that. Uh, but that's really kind of been the impetus for that provision being inserted in the Senate Bill 727. So we exceed that, but anticipate receiving that 1% revenue, um, but we'll continue to look at our calendar, solicit feedback from staff. Between now and our December monthly meeting, uh, please let us know if you have any questions, concerns, further discussion, otherwise when we return at our December meeting, um, you'll see this on the agenda, um, as it relates to, um, a board consideration in action. Okay?
Other legislative priorities?
Um, as mentioned earlier, um, in addition to those education associations, we've been working as a board to, uh, prepare for the legislative session, and that means updating our legislative priorities. You have seen this document multiple times, uh, over the course of the fall, from really study session conversations and tweaking and wordsmithing and inserting a couple of additional concepts, um, ideas that we want to make sure and convey to our legislators, both from our area, but then also legislators that are outside of our area, um, who we want to ensure, uh, understand our priorities and kind of expectations, uh, going into the legislative session. In addition to the legislative priorities document that you see, um, we send that every January with a letter from the Board President and Superintendent, um, that then further draws out a couple of things we might want to insert, particularly around some of the innovative work that we're doing in our district, or inclusion in the Success Ready Students Network, or highlighting real-world learning across, um, our region, uh, but then always inviting them, if they are able and willing, to come visit and see the work that we're doing in our schools. This as well is presented to you this evening for first read, over the course of the next several weeks. If you have questions, uh, please let us know, otherwise you'll see it on your agenda in December for consideration, and then as we enter into the new year, um, we'll just send that to our legislators, uh, for their awareness. As well as a handout, as we visit Jeff City or we have legislative meetings, if people want to know, uh, you know, what we stand for, we can certainly provide this handout to them, um, in easy format. So appreciate everyone's help in getting us to this point this evening. Okay?
Appreciate the changes that have been made, and then we've discussed it in a few things, and I see that they're included, so this is good to me.
It looks tidy. Doesn't look, it looks good.
What you have not seen is the, what you didn't see is the trying to make it all fit.
Yeah, the fonts got a little small.
You'll notice, you gotta like, your glasses.
Well, the one font is pretty small. But it does all fit on a page.
We'll work on, we'll work on that for December's meeting.
We'll give them a magnifying glass.
He'll be a magnifying glass.
Not to be missed, that most of our priorities are underfunding.
A little bit of that, yeah. And it's interesting, historically, year upon year, some years, we don't make any changes. And in other years, we make, you know, significant changes, and I would say this year is somewhere in between, where we have had some suggestions shared, um, and it works to try to incorporate that. The big piece being, after everything they put into Senate Bill 727, they need to fund that. And there are a couple of things that, you know, we do believe they need to fix as well, but we'll see how that plays out.
We think they need to fix it. We'll see if they agree that they need to fix it.
That's fair.
Items pulled from the consent agenda.
We did pull a couple of items related to board reimbursements, uh, check number 727430 to Mr. Byrd in the amount of $54, and check number 727474 to Ms. Jen Bauer in the amount of $50. These are tied to expenses, um, from the Missouri School Boards Association Conference recently held here in Kansas City. So we'll present those to you for your consideration.
Do we have receipts on that? I'm joking.
We do.
I move the board.
Cindy Sullivan? Or Denise Aldrich?
I move the board approve check number 727430 to AJ Byrd and check 727474, right, to Jen Bauer for reimbursement of expenses for, from the MSBA conference.
Second.
So how many abstains, uh, do they need? Do we keep?
We are limited. Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Abstain.
AJ?
Abstain.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That's close. That shit was close. I've cast a check.
Does anyone have anything for the good of the order under legislation and advocacy?
Yes.
No.
As I went to Jeff City, and even now, uh, I don't know the number, but from this area, I know at least four former educators that are part of legislative bodies, and I suspect there are more. Uh, so I, I guess I'm asking myself, do they look at education differently after spending 20 or 30 years in the classroom? I, I find that difficult. So I, I'm going to do more study of that to try to see whose, whose educators are. But we have a number that are, are there that I've met over the years, and so I would think they'd be supportive of education.
So what did you think was difficult? Kind of like that, like, I was waiting for something to follow, AJ.
There's nothing to follow. I, I just want to know.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you'll share that with us when you find out?
Absolutely, because I'm expecting them to support us.
That would be nice. I would, I would like to know as well, now that Dr. Jacobs is there, as well as a couple of others. And of course, you've met.
I can tell you the name, Dorn Byrd.
Oh, yes, 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 ma'am.
And oftentimes, what you'll see with those that have educational experience, like you lean on those legislators and their expertise in assigning to committees, right? Um, so you may see some of that in the House or the Senate, um, assigned to an education committee or a joint committee, um, over time, that has yet to be determined, right? But, um, leverage them where they have their expertise, so.
And we'd be happy to provide them with information, too. Absolutely. And then there is a list of upcoming dates. The first one leans off with December 10th for the board candidate filing. Um, March 11th is MSBA Advocacy Day, so think about that. Then there's a couple of conferences, a lot of conferences. COSPA, and NSBA, MSBA, MSBA. There's a lot of those. No, of course, all the board meetings. So, any board remarks for the good of the order?
Just want to shout out everybody who stuck with us through this. We've got some students that are still in the, in the audience tonight, so thank you.
Do you guys get extra points for staying? Well, you should.
If you need extra credit, we'll be happy, you write it up, we'll introduce it. Stayed until the end of the meeting.
I'll email this plaster.
Also.
Welcome to our colleague from Park Hill. We did not recognize you earlier, I apologize for that, but thanks for hanging out. Yay on, I'm sure, the, this matter of distinction that you're going for at this one.
Fantastic.
Okay, well, I move the board adjourn.
Second.
Nick?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. And I want you to know-